Will you give us our prayer? We'll get them done five back for our...
Eternal God, our Father, we thank you for today. We thank you for the renewed interest in city government here in West Memphis. We ask that you bless these proceedings and that you use them and use each of these council representatives to further your good cause. And we pray this in the name of the Savior, Jesus Christ, amen.
Join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. City Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Mayor McClendon?
Present.
Senator Turner Stevenson?
Here.
City Treasurer Martin?
Here.
Counselor Cat? Counselor Crone?
Here.
Counselor Harris? Counselor Hope?
Here.
Counselor Hutchison? Counselor Pulliam?
Here.
Counselor Robertson?
Present.
Counselor Wheeler's? And Counselor Monday?
Here.
Well, with Corn being present, I talked with Councilman Tracy Cat. He had to go to Florida to take his wife. So with that being said, we're going to bid openings. We had no bid openings for the park benches and the parks table. Mr. Johnson will rebid those bids out at the May meeting, correct? And we have, we have bids for the installation of the fire poles at Tilden Rogers. Can I get a motion? Second.
Second.
We're going to refer them back to the proper agents. My second thing here today, I have a very special presentation to give out today of someone that's in our city that done a great job. In the time, in a trial from time, she still stood tall and did everything that she could do to save the lives of two young men. And I just wanted to honor her and show her that her city appreciate her and her efforts and her efforts is not to go overlooked. So I'm going to ask Ms. LaGuen Cannon, will you come forward? How you doing? I want to recognize this young lady. I know many of you out here that the tragedy that happened around April 6th to April 6th. And this young lady right here happened to be there that night. And when these young men, not knowing them personally, but did have some knowledge when they was wounded, her skills did not make her run out the room. Her skill made her stay in there and fight to try to help save their life. And in order that they did not survive, it was just her efforts and her royals of trying to save these young men cannot go without being recognized. I mean, and I called and told her that I wanted to honor her. You know, she told me, she said, "I don't want to receive the award because the young men passed." But just showing what you done in the face of all that was going on, all the chaos was going on. You did not leave those young men. You stayed, we didn't stay in, and all EMTs got there. And I just want to tell you as your mayor, I'm proud of you and you are the type of people that made West Memphis the city that it is. So today, the City of West Memphis certificate of appreciation by the Honorable Marvin McClendon do hereby honor Ms. LaGuen Cannon. This award is presented to Ms. LaGuen Cannon for demonstrating herism and skill attempting to save the lives of others on April the 6th, 2018. Her quick response and recognition of the severity of their medical emergency, immediate actions, and providing effective CPR until the EMS personnel arrived. On today, I want us to recognize and honor a person of courage, a person who loves West Memphis for her actions she have proved there. Ms. LaGuen Cannon, thank you.
I really don't know what to say. Honestly, like I told the mayor, I did it from the heart. There was no way that I could leave. I, it's really hard, the aftermath, I will say that, it's really, really hard. But I honestly would do it again if I had to. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda are the minutes. Can I get a motion in a second to approve the minutes?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? The minutes are accepted. So we're going to go to our old business, Ms. City Clerk?
An ordinance to amend ordinance number 1224, section three regarding duties of code enforcement officer for the City of West Memphis, Arkansas, and for other purposes.
Hearing that motion, can I get a second, first, a motion and a second?
Second.
In discussion. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Ms. City Clerk, will you give that ordinance a number, please?
Ordinance number 2503.
This is the third reading of an ordinance to amend ordinance number 2403 in section 34-30 of the West Memphis Municipal Code to set garbage collection fees and for other purposes.
With that being hearing, can I get a motion in a second?
Second.
All, in discussion.
Mayor, if you could just elaborate on a little bit of actually what we're doing in there, so, you know.
Sure. Our explanation is that the City of West Memphis is preparing to go to curbside garbage pickups. And what we are doing, we are getting ready to purchase the curbside garbage can for everyone. Every residential home will have a new curbside dumpster. And to pay for these dumpsters, we had to go up, take a dollar increase in order to get there, purchase these dumpsters, so.
Will that, will that increase be sunset or will it just continue on and on?
Well, once we purchasing...
After the carts are paid off?
If the council wants to, besides the sunset, I have no problem with that.
Sunset means that you will no longer have to pay that dollar twenty-five fee is basically what that is. And I was thinking that once that, the carts are paid, unless there's some other kind of emergency for the money, then we could sunset it.
Okay. I don't have any problem with that.
You're going to amend it?
Didn't we talk about that, that we were going to sunset it?
Uh, I don't know.
James?
I don't think we talked about sunset, but I would like to see, once it's paid, of course, now for depreciation, I mean, we do need to start a depreciation account. And I mean, I would like to see at least fifty cents. I'm just saying for depreciation, because I mean, when the equipment break down, you gotta have something, you know, to...
Replace.
But I think it needs to be sunset all the seventy, fifty cents. That'll kind of help us, you know, for us, you know, equipment breakdown, something like that. But I wouldn't want to see the whole dollar something stay on. I mean, I can put it in the form of amendment if we like to leave, we could just wait.
We can pass it and then you all come back in and sunset it. All right, let me get a vote.
I'll make a motion, we accept.
Get a vote, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Ms. City Clerk, will you give that a number?
Ordinance number 2504.
All right, this is the second reading of an ordinance amending ordinance number 1548 to allow the sale, consumption, or possession of beer and wine products on public property owned and designated by the City of West Memphis and supervised by the West Memphis Advertising and Promotion Commission.
May I just make a motion that we table, not table it, but wait until the next meeting?
Okay. Well, that's the second reading, it'll be back on in two weeks and for the final reading. James? James?
I'll make a motion if we read R. one back tight on.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Opposed?
Thank you. A resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a local purchasing agreement binding between DLT Solutions LLC and the City of West Memphis for procurement of products and services under AWS Cooperative Purchasing Agreements and for other purposes.
The motion is second to approve. In discussion.
Will you explain a little bit what this may be?
Ms. Amanda, will you come forward, please?
Yes, ma'am. This is a purchasing agent agreement that Mike Stevenson has came up with. Do you want to know more about the Rubicon program? Or would you like to know about how this procedure is carried out?
Basically, this company and what the city...
Benefits.
...has a kind of a agreement the city is going to with this particular company and...
It's a three-year program. And it's off of bids that have been opened by the city in West Virginia. And all that's been reviewed by Mike Stevenson. And the reason why we're going into the agreement is because we are actually going to utilize this program to help us set routes for sanitation purposes and also keep up with our trucks and the inventory to make sure we, if we have fault codes on the trucks, just to make sure that they're kept up and actually running.
I can add to it that, no, what I'm saying, to answer the part about how the contract works, it's already been competitively bid through a procurement process. There's a state statute in Arkansas that allows for procurement purchases. And that's when there is a competitive bidding that takes place for certain types of services. And that's what this particular situation is. So it has been competitively bid, so we're getting the lowest price that we can on this particular service.
That's all discussion. Another discussion. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Ms. City Clerk, would you give that resolution a number?
Resolution 2194.
We got a resolution that I think that we would like to add or wait in two weeks.
Ordinance.
Oh, ordinance, I'm sorry, ordinance. That you all want to add to ordinance, where compared the bidding on the purchase of a police vehicle?
I mean, I'll make a motion, see if it attempt to get it on the agenda, if it don't, then...
Second.
All in favor, aye? Opposed? What is that? Ms. Ford? It's on you now.
Make a motion, read back tight on.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All right, this is an ordinance waiving competitive bidding for the purchase of a police vehicle declaring an emergency and for other purposes.
I get a motion in second to suspend the rule and place on the second reading.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
An ordinance waiving competitive bidding for the purchase of a police vehicle declaring an emergency and for other purposes.
I need a motion in second to force the suspend the rule and place it on the third reading.
So moved.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
An ordinance waiving competitive bidding for the purchase of a police vehicle declaring an emergency and for other purposes.
Motion in second?
So moved.
In discussion.
I think for Major Allen to come up and just...
Major Allen?
Yes, sir.
This is about the, the police vehicles, waiving compared to bidding, buying this new Tahoe.
Let me ask my understanding, yes, sir.
I mean, we just want you to just give us a little explanation.
Did you know anything about it?
I've heard talks of it. I know we need more vehicles.
Yeah, we, we, some of us didn't know anything about it either, so that's why we wanted somebody that might know something to let us know about it.
I just know we picked up three new vehicles yesterday. Some cars and we supposed to been trying to get some more.
Those are replacement vehicles that we talking about, right?
I guess so, yes, sir.
For accidents.
That's what I assumed, so. But I do know the department need more vehicles, so.
Major Allen, you never know, you just send back there.
Yeah, I know. I tried to ease in here, so.
All in favor, aye?
I think that those, Major Allen, I think that those three you picked up yesterday were replacements for the detective unit, detective unit of those three yesterday. So there's, I'm trying to figure all this out. There's five in the budget. There were two that were totaled that are being replaced mostly through the insurance. And then a new one or another one added today. Is that right?
No, there was five Tahoe's in the budget.
Right.
Three detective cars in the budget.
Right.
And the three detective cars, y'all approved a month ago.
Okay, I remember approving those, they came through us.
And the two insurance replacement cars, y'all approved.
Approved, yeah.
Two weeks ago.
Yeah.
The charges is what they picked up yesterday.
But we're talking about another police vehicle at this time, right? Is that right?
That is correct.
Tahoe, yeah.
I would, I would tend to think that this should be one of the five on the budget.
But I just wanted him to come up, just give us a small explanation.
We haven't talked about that, this is the first time I've seen it as well.
See, this is why, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I think this should be one of the five. And I do know that, what the reporter that they do have are shorthanded because of all the wrecks. And it takes so much, takes so much time to get the Tahoe's to the state bid.
Right. This is, of course, we want to, we want to give the police department and all of our departments everything that they need because they're so valuable to us. But this is why we have committees and commissions to discuss all these type things. So when we get on the floor, there will be absolutely no confusion about what is going on. So we do want to approve this and because we know they need it. But as far as the police commission is concerned, we knew nothing about it. And if we had known, had it been come through proper channels, police commission referred to budget, then back to council, all of these questions would have been avoided today.
Okay, that's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Wells and I agree with you and I make sure that that's the proceeding from now.
Thank you.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Ms. City Clerk, would you give that ordinance a number?
Ordinance number 2505.
I need a motion in second to approve the permission for me to sign the Rubicon.
Oh, I'm sorry, we had an emergency clause.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Let me get a motion in second to approve section two.
Section two.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, aye? Opposed? It passed. Now, can I get a motion in second to have permission to sign the contract?
So moved.
We really already took care of that through with the, with the resolutions, so.
All right. Committee reports. We're starting down the line, right?
Police. We had a meeting on Wednesday, April the 10th. And it came up, the grand jury didn't have enough evidence to indict the officers. They were exonerated and our officer that was injured in the accident, he's still off duty. It is unsure when he will return. The license plate readers that we talked about at our last meeting, they're going to be installed within the next two weeks. And we had a change of time for our meeting. We went, we're meeting Wednesday at noon. It's going to change to four o'clock in the afternoon on the second Wednesday of the month. And our resource officers are at all the schools. And for the last three weeks, they've been working real smoothly, everything's been going good. And our violent crime unit is back up and running with our four officers are working, working the violent crime unit. We had a, a couple of people came out, a couple of citizens came out and spoke at our last commission meeting. Dennis Morris and Wesley Kitchen. And they spoke about the big trucks parking in the neighborhoods. And we still, we got the chief to, to, to talk about that a little bit. And we still in process of, we're going to meet with them again about the same issue until we get it resolved. That's all of my report, thank you.
Mr. Hope, did you have anything with the parks? Mr. Crone, airport?
Yes, the airport commission met this morning and they approved the payment of $6,000 in audit fees to Jackson Howell and Associates. Cassandra, the general manager for the airport, attended the Arkansas Department of Aeronautics Commission meeting. And the grant that we're receiving from the aeronautics committee is a ninety-ten grant where the city pays ten and then the state pays ninety. And that's for the runway pavement rehab and marking project. And we, the commission also approved custom pavement maintenance and safety, who was the lowest bidder to do the project of the, the runway marking rehab and the remarking project. And that concludes my report.
All right. Let's go down to utility department.
Utility met April 11th, 2018. General manager talked, Peterson, he reported there 206 days since the last record of injury and 548 days since, and they lost, and they lost injury since March. For the, and they had approved to sign an agreement with KTI proposed to prepare for, other words, them as a defender and then also pretend by Tom Pete and they, well, could part of this off. But anyway, they approved that to get KTI in to do proposals, get the proposals together for the utility department as well. But that's pretty much sums it up. And they still working on the ordinance that they have to get them filled.
They complete your report? Councilman Willis on the fire, Chamber of Commerce?
I don't have one on the fire, we got the Chamber of Commerce. The Chamber of Commerce, we met on April the 10th at noon. We were welcomed by Councilman Wayne Crone, which is the president of the chamber. And Wayne was the speaker for the day.
Did you want to end the theme, Mr. Crone?
He, he did it all. But we, I do want to highlight a couple of things that were talked about. On April the 25th, which coming up, we got the water tower grand lighting ceremony. It's 5:30. Like for everybody in the city to come out for that.
Is that the Mr. Crone water tower?
That's Mr. Crone's water tower.
Unfortunately, I will not be present. I will be at the coalition meeting over in the wind, darn it.
Right. Then on, on April the 27th, though, we've got Delta Arts on the levee. And that's at Waverly Plantation, that starts at 5:00 PM. One thing I did want to hit on back here that I think the public all needs to know and, and, and would like to see them make an effort to contribute to this. The Holmes Hammett Scholarship, there's been eight applicants so far. And I think there's money already there, but I was impressed that there's eight very, very fine applicants already got to be already lined up for them. So I'd appreciate it if everybody would do something to contribute to that to make sure these kids get these scholarships in behalf of Holmes. Other than that, that's, that's the end of mine.
All right.
Thank you.
That's all, Ms. Harris? Yeah, thank you, okay. Well, I had three quick announcements. First of all, I know many of you all heard about the biggest expansion that we got. Coca-Cola has been a valuable business and with already in our community. And they had to have decided to do an expansion, a $33 million expansion with a 200,000 square foot new building. It's going to hire around sixty to seventy new jobs here, good paying jobs in our city. I want to truly thank Mallory Darby and Phil Sorrell for their hard work and all of you for your support and whatever they may need, whether it's the pilot program or just making sure they have what they need to be successful. So Coca-Cola has expanded here and then, let me say, in three weeks, I think I'm going to have another bigger announcement that I'm very excited about that I announce. Give me a minute, it's going to be good for the City of West Memphis. We are truly on the winning streak economically, so just be looking out for that. As well as, I want to acknowledge, La Quinta Inn had their big grand opening yesterday. It was a big success. Have you ever went into a hotel, into their hotel? It's very good, it's a very good looking facility. And they're doing good business and that only helps the City of West Memphis. Also, the flooding, we had a quick meeting in our pre-council dealing with the flood and that's one thing I definitely wanted us to talk more about to the public that we are doing a lot to help this flooding here in West Memphis. But it's something that we just don't have control over. But be looking out real soon for us to have, how city engineers and everyone involved to get a message out to the community about what we can do to make this flood better, to relieve this water better, or get you more understanding of how this process work as well. So that's all I had in the announcements. Now... Okay. And also last thing, Mr. Allen, you may want to help me on this one. Many of you all may have heard about the curfew that we already have on law. I've been working with Mr. Allen and he gave me some suggestions how we can place teeth into that curfew. It's already passed, it's already approved. So we're going to start to enforce that curfew. You want a couple of men in the team, Mr. Allen? Okay. Well, pretty much, if you're seven, if you're under seventeen years old and you're not, you're not at work and you're not with an adult on a school night after 11 o'clock, you are breaking the curfew law. So we want to make sure that our children are safe in our community. That's one of the things that we are placing forward. And there's a reason why we doing those things. But we just want to make sure that the community is aware of it and they know it is approved, like it is law here in the City of West Memphis. And we're going to do everything we can to make sure our children are safe. And that also leads down to our citizen requests. I have three young adults that goes to West Junior High that were great friends with Taylan Vale. And they're going to come up and speak to you and I just want the council to hear them. I went to West and I think I stayed about three hours, three or four hours, just listening to young people. I'm telling you guys, they knew more than what we think they know. And we have to start listening. So I'm going to first start out with Ms. Mary Bailey. Come up and give your name and your address and you have five minutes to talk with the council.
Good afternoon. My name is Mary Bailey and I stay in Proctor. I would like, I have some issues that I would like to address. And my first issue that I would like to address is these adults, these men specifically, standing by stores. Like, they have the rights to stand by stores, the stores or whatever, but we would like police is around the store so we can feel safer walking into the store. And I would also like... I would also like East Wander and West to come together as one whole school. Or like every quarter, just so we can know each other before we go, go to the high school, move on to the high school. Just have like a freshman day or something together so we can just talk to each other, get to know each other more before we move on to the high school. And I would like the police is to come to the school and interfere in our lives more. Like play basketball with us at gym, come flip with us and have, just have fun with us. Just to put a name in the face to the people that are getting shot around West Memphis. Everybody at West Junior High knew Taylan and we knew him very personally. We know that he didn't deserve that. All he wanted to do was play basketball and keep a smile on his face. We know he wasn't involved in any game or anything. We just want to come and I'm very sorry that we had, that Taylan killing had to make us come out like this. Thank you. Any questions?
Well, I just want to say the idea that you said about all the schools coming together, that's very important because when I sat down and talked with you guys, I know I was talking to some of the young men and they explained to me that just because they live on the west side, they are viewed as being part of the west side gangs by the east side gangs. And they grew up with each side not liking each other because of what side they live on. That's why I'm pushing this campaign of one West Memphis. We all want West Memphis. So definitely, I'd love to see that happen. I'm going to pitch that idea to Dr. Collins. Because we got to do more to get you all together, but through the mentoring program, we're going to make that happen. Thank you, young lady. Ms. Bailey?
I'd like to elaborate on that too with the police. We want to do more community policing. We want to, we want to get involved with our youth, with our children. We had it going a while back, a few years back, we did have some things out in the park and different places for our youth. And our police is came out and got to know them and, and that was good. The kids, you know, you're not scared of the police. You get to know somebody, it's easy to talk to them. And we need more of that. We got some good resource officers that's really concerned about our, our kids, but we need all of them to come out and do the same thing. That's, that's all.
Are you, when you said, mentioned the stores, are you talking about like your convenience stores?
Yes, sir.
The loitering, the...
Yes, sir.
...around the stores?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
You know, I want to just say something. I spoke with our senate and state representative represent this area and we got a new bill that's been, that's passed.
that's, that have been packed, that, that's passed, uh, starting this year called Senate Bill Eds one fifty-two, it's revamping the whole juvenile system, and what they looking at doing is putting more money back into the community, to kind of, you know, work with the juveniles before they get to a certain point, so, and, um, I know, excuse, Senator Ingram, I know he's, he's looking now to see what he could, you know, what, what's in the bill that would help aid our community as well, where both, both of your representatives, I talked with them, and they're looking now, trying to see what they could do to kind of help the community now. So, we got something else coming on the pipeline, shoot, help us out.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, young lady.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Uh, Ms. Maria Callaway, come forward, please.
Good afternoon, I'm Maria Callaway, I'm fourteen years old and I attend West Junior High, I also live in West Memphis, Arkansas. I'm here to speak on some of the issues in our community. I think we should focus more on these grown men, honestly, they are the ringleaders of this side claiming this. They got kids killing kids, they are giving these young boys guns and telling them to stand their ground by killing the next person, and it has gotten outrageous. I'm tired of seeing my fellow classmates on T-shirt, can y'all just close your eyes and imagine the pain I'm feeling right now? My heart really aches because I have to bury somebody that really meant the world to me tomorrow. I just come here today to tell y'all it's time for a change.
Ms. Madison Perry?
Yeah, I'm Madison Perry, I'm fourteen years old, I go to West Junior High, I'm a freshman. I'm gonna start my speech off by saying I don't feel safe in my neighborhood, even though it's small and barely got people living in there. Stackhouse was from there, y'all should know, he the one that killed like two people at that club and whatnot, and I have a three-year-old brother who lives there, and I couldn't imagine my world without him in there. Have y'all ever just stopped and thought about your neighborhood, how safe it is, how unsafe it is, if you can walk without being disturbed, and you just... Just stand there and view it. Also, I want to talk about the gang bangers, and how young men just out here in the world taking risks because of the next fellow who was in the gang, so they automatically have to be in the gang. They do it just so they can be hard and have something to claim, but little do you know, it's somebody's son out there, if he gets shot and killed, we just see him as another individual who was a part of the gang and off the streets now, but we don't view him as someone's son. I want to take a moment, talk about Taylan Vale and the tragedy that happened, also show y'all this shirt that we made for him. He was a sweet, smart young man, he wasn't, he was more of a man than any boy on the street now, he was funny, he did a lot of impressions, like right here. This is an Instagrammer named Slimeball, and he used to always mock him, he always make his face like here. And every time he did it, it just made me crack up. He was bright, handsome, he had a future in basketball, and he was gonna be famous, the famous Valen Tail Three, Valen Tail Three. Um, he was innocent and very popular, everyone knew him and loved him, and he was very respectful to adults and kids, that's why this is very hard for everybody. It also took him to realize West Memphis is really need a change, everything feels so wrong about this situating, situation, waiting till a young innocent life dies in order to say it's time for a change. In my experience throughout all of this, I haven't had much sleep since it happened. Last night was the first night I actually got some sleep. I, I, every night I wake up out of my sleep panting, having a small panic attack, asking myself, why, why did it have to be him, or am I next? Because I'm so scared that somebody, anybody, would just shoot up my house looking for Stackhouse. You know, I want to talk about West Memphis. It's unsafe in many people's eyes, so many of my friends are leaving me next year because their families are moving away because of the danger. There's nothing here to do because of the gun violence, every, everything West Memphis had ever had got shut down because of the fighting, shooting, or just straight up not want to deal with the gang bangers. I have some quotes from people in West Junior High. Jackson Bennett, eighth grader, quoted, "It ain't good," and I agree with him. Gracie Ransom, eighth grader, quoted, "It ain't safe, it's not a good place to raise your kids," and I agree with that. Madison Chesney, ninth grader, said, "She didn't like it, it's not my favorite place, it's unsafe." Caleb F. Sample, ninth grader, quoted, "It's a piece of crap." Freddie Thorne and Luke Martin both quoted, "It's very violent, has nothing to do here, everybody hate each other." I disagree, I think they're trying to say that it's full of animosity, and they also said it suck. Thank you for your time, and hope just open your eyes to realize West Memphis need a change. Any questions?
Say yes. We all make up fifty percent of our population, but you're one hundred percent of our future, and we got to listen to the young people.
Thank you.
You know, I would like to say it takes a lot of courage, uh, for you young people to come up here and address these issues, and, uh, and, uh, the, the young man that was involved in that shooting last week evidently was a real nice young man, and, uh, it's another young person out of our community that you won't see again. And, uh, but again, it, I want to tell you that I admire you coming in here and speaking up and talking about the things that you guys see and what your ideas are. I would like to see that the, uh, council gets more involved in the schools, and I've had some preliminary discussions with, uh, your superintendent, and, uh, it's, it's like each one of us in our wards have a school, and, uh, it would be good if two, if two representatives in that ward would also, uh, inter- intervene with your school, and, uh, I think that would be a really good idea too, if we could get more involved in your school system. Thank you.
And I would like to say, it is a good idea, but we also need the ministers and the preachers to get out to churches and come to the school, walk the streets, we need some prayer, it's gonna take prayer to do this. The policees can't do it all. It's gonna take us coming together, praying, it's gonna take God, this is a God thing, that's what's gonna stop. It's gonna take us coming together as a people and pray. Instead of pointing fingers, we gonna have to come together and love one another, and that's what Jesus is all about, love one another, and we learn how to love each other and come together in situations like this, we can make it. Only God can do it.
Mr. Richard Massey, will you come forward?
Also before, I'd like to let them know as well, uh, one that L.R. Jackson is planning on, having stopped the violent rally the last Saturday in this month, and they have a dynamic speaker, and I'm quite sure the press is, is familiar, very familiar with him, and I'd like to invite all of y'all to come, the, the last Saturday this morning, eleven o'clock, they're gonna block the streets off, you're gonna have a stop the violent, uh, stop the violent rally.
Good afternoon, my name is Richard Massey, I'm fourteen years old, nine-ten West Junior High School. I currently live in Marion, but it absolutely pains me to see my closest peers and my friends suffer each and every day in West Memphis. Like so many members of my community, I am deeply concerned about the direction of West Memphis, lest sixteen-year-old Haylon Vale, a charismatic, promising, positive young man who was senselessly taken from us, serve as an example of how the gun violence epidemic of West Memphis is affecting us all. In fact, West Memphis is comfortably at number fifteen on the top one hundred most dangerous cities in America per capita list. That statistic isn't unsettling enough to make you strive to make change, and I'm not sure it will. Behind the bloody mask that covers West Memphis as of now, there's a psychology that consists of abandonment, betrayal, and despair. As you may have guessed, the psychology comes from the absence of father figures in one's childhood. This cycle of absent fathers marks the beginning of various behavioral issues and mental health issues. I therefore and truly believe that the seeds of influential male role models in our community is the cause for the staggering crime statistics that plague our community now. Today, I present to you a three-point initiative. That's plans to deter violence, um, the absence of fathers in our community, and the destruction of our children. Point one calls for less workplace discrimination, specifically the discrimination of the criminally convicted. It is now time to allow the criminally convicted to obtain employment, considering they're the overwhelming majority when it comes to being incapable of financially supporting their children. Point two calls for the WMPD to authorize more proactive policing by increasing presence in high-risk neighborhoods and within our schools, as they've already done impressively. Not only will this effort curtail crime, but it will also help improve relations amongst our brave law enforcement in our community. The third and last point calls for the city of West Memphis to invest in our future. By this, I mean the implementation of new after-school programs dedicated to building character, charisma, and intelligence within our youth. Simply, it is time to make a change in West Memphis, so we can no longer stand and shed more blood, no more tears. Thank you.
We're listening.
Yes, sir.
And we're gonna do these things.
Yes, sir.
I want to recognize Principal Tyler, and who you have with you, Ms. Anne?
Ms. Gann.
Ms. Gann? We just want to recognize you all, and mother, Ms. Charlotte Perry, how you doing? Thank you all for allowing them to come speak to us, I mean, you can see from their conversation that they are very knowledgeable, and I hope we learned a lot, and we're gonna do some things to work to make West Memphis better, because we all committed for a better city. Thank you all.
Thank you, I think you've done a great job coming in and communicating with our children, it's kind of gave them an opportunity to have a voice that they feel like they didn't have.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Mayor, you just might have met your opponent in four to eight years.
Well, I, I, I asked him when, when we was in my office, to let me have another four years, so by the time he graduated, I'd been to bring my election, so, yeah. But I'll be honest with you, if there's someone that's gonna continue to move our cities forward, I'll get a seat up in a minute, because it's about West Memphis and not me.
Amen.
Thank you.
I would like to thank each and every one of you youngsters for coming out, being a mother of five, I most certainly understand your fears and your concerns, and believe me, as Ms. Harris was saying, of course, it's going to take prayer, but it's going to take more than prayer, it's gonna take action on our part as well.
Thank you.
God gave us the common sense to do the things that we have to do, he's not just gonna come down and tell us, oh, put a finger on us, is I do this, so that he gave us everything that we needed out on the inside to do what we have to do. So you all keep up with us, and we're gonna keep up with you, and most certainly, we want to see some changes take place in the city of West Memphis.
This council's in one accord.
Young people, I, uh, grew up in West Memphis, born and raised in West Memphis, and I understand right now you all have pain for the classmate that you have lost. Um, West Memphis is not a bad place to live. Mr. Monday and some of the other peoples in the audience know that when we was growing up in West Memphis, we had things to do, we had activities to, from dark till three o'clock in the morning at the boys' club, girls' club in West Memphis. If we can just get back to giving our kids activities and keeping them away from gang bangers and PlayStations with violence, and it starts at home with the parents, help raise your kids, because the mayor, the police, they cannot, they cannot raise your kids. It starts with all of us, it'd take a village to raise a child, that's why I was raised, born on Eighth Street. People on Eighth Street helped my mom with eleven kids to raise us, okay? And I, I can sit here honestly say out of eleven kids, I'm the only one that went to jail, okay? It starts at home with the parents, and I'm not gonna fuss about it, but parents got to help us, the mayor, the police, and other parents raise their kids. Okay, the school cannot raise you guys, they can educate you, but it takes the parents to start at home. And so if the parents will listen, you start at home, you can save your child, and let's start today. Thank you for coming, we, we respect you, we take what you're saying to heart, and myself, with the mayor and the city council, we're gonna work hard to improve this city.
Right. Mayor, I'd like to say a couple words. Councilman Hope? I had a granddaughter that went through West, did very well, uh, but Joyce and I were involved, the parish has to be involved with the school, they should be involved, they should know what's going on. Uh, she's at senior high now and doing great, senior high is a good place. West Memphis, like Joyce said, it's not a bad place, but this, this city council and this new mayor, we're gonna do some improvements here, where it's gonna take care of a lot of you young people as what we can do to help your lives and help you grow and be mature. I pray every night for this city and for our school, and for our young people, because I feel like that it's, it's, it's not just me, it's you, it's you, and you. Everyone has to work together, together, but if we all work together, this city is going to grow and will be something that we'll all be proud of. Thank you, appreciate you guys did what you did.
Thank you all.
I'd like to hear from you all again, keep us informed.
Hang around if you can, uh, we're gonna call up our next speaker, uh, is Mr. Wesley Kitchens, will you come forward? We normally give five minutes, it's where I give your name, your address.
Kitchens, I live at thirteen oh six Stratford Drive here in West Memphis, I've been living there twenty-eight years, and the reason I'm here today is because I signed up to speak today before I attended the police commission meeting, because I was one of the two that was talking about the trucks in the neighborhoods. You can get along with trucks in neighborhoods, I've been doing it for twenty-three years, but the truck drivers are gonna have to adhere to certain things to get along in the community. Now, the man that has brought up the major complaint on this, I talked to him, and then his two major complaints are, the truck parks out in the street, and the truck idles all night. That would be easy for the city to stop, you don't have to have the police commission and the city council getting involved in all of that, that's just a big personal issue between two neighbors that could easily be solved. But the, what I'm gonna say today, especially after listening to these young people speak, this seems trivial, but, um, if the city council in the future has to come up with something on this, I would ask that y'all take the time to try to make a happy medium between people trying to make a living, I'm an owner-operator, I own that truck sitting in my driveway. So, with company trucks, they don't have to worry about, but you need to have some certain things, don't park out in the street, don't park in grass, park on pay parking, don't idle the trucks. If you need to come up with some way, I suggested that you come up with a city heavy parking permit, that where code enforcement could come out, make sure that the person meets the criteria, and allow that truck to park there. Every year, I pay five hundred and fifty dollars to the United States Treasury, heavy road use tax, that's what every truck pays to, for tearing the streets up. West Memphis could come up with a heavy parking permit for trucks, big RVs, I'm not complaining, there's a man in my neighborhood that's got a huge tour bus, I, I'm not complaining at all, that thing has to be over two hundred thousand dollars. Anybody that can afford a nice house, that big tour bus, and maintain his house and everything, he's an asset to West Memphis, he's not a hindrance to us, and with these young people that were here, you know, they need, all we're trying to do is make a living, I'm no different than a plumber, keeping his truck in his driveway, or air conditioning repair, you can drive through, but you can drive through my section of town between Clement, Broadway, and Colonial, and if y'all start trying to, you know, change how people park and everything, because some people can't move their vehicles in the back, because the developers were trying to get as many houses as they could in there, and there's literally not enough room to get to the back because most of them, and that was one of the reasons that we picked the house that we did, I could get my race car and my boat in the backyard, but a lot of them put the central air unit right in the way, so it would be a major deal. But anybody in this neighborhood or this city that can, you know, have an RV, travel trailer, semi-truck, that, within reason, and that would be where y'all come in, is y'all need to say what reason is. But that's all I wanted to say about that, I, at first, right now, the police commission is fixing, discussing, and see if we can kind of find a happy medium, and then present to y'all, but sometimes when the city councils try to do it, like, the EPA is always trying to get cities to pass no idling ordinances for trucks, sounds great, but what they don't consider is the truck driver may be sitting in the truck stop or over here at Americor or something like that, when it's ninety degrees or thirty degrees, and he can't idle his truck, and believe it or not, some councils have, have passed ordinance that says no idling over fifteen minutes. that says no idling over fifteen minutes unless you have a pet in the truck. The pet makes it okay to idle the truck. So, as I say, if it comes to a full city council, I just hope y'all get my input, other truck drivers' input, people that own RVs, people that are complaining about them, and kind of get something that makes everybody happy, if there's such a thing. But that's all I have to say about it.
Thank you. Ms. Furlough? Is she here, Ms. Furlough? Last time, Ms. Furlough, she's not here. We're gonna move forward to Ms. Simmons. Will you come forward, please? No, we have five minutes. Give your name and your address.
Simmons, hi, my address is four twenty-one South Fourteenth Street here in the city. I, I'd like to say good evening to the mayor, the council, and everyone out in the area there. You know, I had this all together, what I was gonna talk about, how I was gonna talk about it. Those young people, I'm still emotional from listening at them, and I don't know whether today I will be able to do what I had first started, wanted to do, but I'm gonna try. I'll be back two weeks from now, though. Um, and this is still my way of opposing having anything being done with the Roberta Jackson Building on South Fourteenth and Polk Avenue, other than things that's going to, um, help these children, help their parents, help some of these people that are out here, older adults, that are doing some things that just not acceptable. I had a person tell me about a week ago, in reference to why I'm here today, that I was beating a dead horse. I just let it stay. I didn't comment on it. The reason I didn't comment on it is because I couldn't find a thing to say right then with that in mind, because that's telling me that each time I get up here and I address this council, that I'm wasting my time, and I don't feel that. To say that I'm wasting my time, when I'm speaking on behalf of this community, and especially our young people, to say that I'm wasting my time is something I just don't agree with at all. This is what I have. This is my future. These are my children. No matter what color, they are still my children. I value every last one of them, and whatever I can do for any of them, I'm not wasting my time. And that horse that's, they say, uh, uh, I'm beating, maybe that horse is just unconscious. Maybe that horse needs some, whatever the, you do to bring them back, to get them from being unconscious. Maybe that's what's needed. Maybe we need to have a, a meeting, not only of the minds, but of the heart, to understand that no matter who we are, we have them, and they need us. They need us not only at the city council level, they need us at the church level, they need us at organizational level, they need us. Not only do they need us, but they need us to listen to them. The one thing that we always tried, and I'm guilty, is of trying to put something together for young people without involving the young people that we're supposedly putting together. These children are, 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 a lot of, you know, we say these days, "I can't do nothing for my, I don't know what's going on with these children. These children are acting crazy." Well, yeah, sure, because we have not done what we're supposed to do as the elders. And we have to once recognize that these things that these children are going through now started years ago. It started fifty years ago. Pre-out of school, no, uh, discipline, not any of this, not tell your mother you can't whip your children, because if you do, you're going to jail. Mother gets scared, don't do anything, because she's working sometimes two jobs to take care of these children. But if they need discipline, they can't get it. Who's gonna respect who? When fathers that are there, if they're there, they're under the same law. These are laws that's governing how we treat our children. The school system's failing them. The parents, you say, are failing them. You say the churches are failing them. So where do these children go when they need to speak to somebody? Where do they go? Who do they go to? That place is large enough to gather a lot of the programs that we need that's going to help us help our children. We can't do it by ourselves. Nobody here can. We need each other to help them. So, here's one thing that I just wanna bring this up, and then I'm, I'm quitting.
Five minutes. Oh, Ms. Simmons. It's up.
It's it?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm through. I'll come back.
Thank you.
Is Mr. Larry Brewer here today?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council, for giving me the opportunity. Uh, I'm Larry Brewer, Brewer Services Incorporated, small, small company. Uh, I'm here to express my disgust about the way citizens and contractors are treated in this town by code enforcement and that office in the back. Uh, and this excludes Morris. He's a new guy, so I'm leaving him out of it. Uh, this started back in two thousand and seven, when I bought, when I opened my business up. I was told, I'm from La Panto, I do a lot of work. I was raised here. I was raised in Marion, on the fire department in Marion for thirteen years. Worked a tornado here in West Memphis when it tore up everything down by the dog track. But anyway, I was told I had to buy a West Memphis privilege license. I presented a state statute that said I did not have to have more than one privilege license in the state of Arkansas, unless I had a brick-and-mortar facility in this town, or in any town. Every town in the state of Arkansas abides by that, except West Memphis. They do now. This year, I refused to buy one. I refused to buy one. I handed the clerk the state law, and I was told, "This is how we do it in West Memphis. You're required to buy a privilege license." So, we're down here working at six twenty West Broadway, trying to get a donut shop open that should have taken three months. It took ten months because of the harassment from code enforcement on unnecessary, uh, issues. A GFI receptacle not accessible because it's sitting behind a countertop coffee pot. Ridiculous. This, this hindered the woman. I met with Paul Luker to discuss, and, and, and it's Johnny Brown's who it is. I went to his office to discuss the problems I was having with Johnny Brown, and I was told, "We're not gonna sit in here and talk about Johnny Brown. This is my office." I was laughed at in that meeting, and I asked him, I said, "Tell me what's so funny, Paul." I said, "Because right now, I'm losing money as a contractor, the plumber's losing money, the, uh, general contractor's losing money, the owner of the business is trying to open, losing money, and y'all are losing tax revenue." I said, "So tell me what's funny where I can laugh with you?" And this, this goes on and on. We, we built a new service for this donut shop because electrical service wasn't big enough. My brother's a master electrician. I hired him onto my company, built this service, couldn't get a green tag on the service until I got Mr. Willis and Mr. Holt involved in on it. Now, Mr. Willis was there the morning. They finally green-tagged it, refused to put the meter in, because the door would open on the bottom, and there is electricity in there. I said, "I'll put a lock on there that's recognized by ISO standards across the country, lockout-tagout." I said, "I'll put a lock on there, but they can't get any." Then I got green-tagged for that, no meter. He said, "They'll cut your lock." I said, "Well, they'll cut your little tag that the utility company puts on there, 'cause that's all it would be on there, and that's all that's on there today." Uh, so I put the lock on there to keep the kids out of the bottom. Got red-tagged for a lock being on there. Took the lock off, put a, a zip tie on there. Got red-tagged for the zip tie. I mean, it's just ignorant, stupid stuff, and we go back to the coke coming over here, and the big industries coming in, and I applaud y'all for that. But you still need the mom-and-pop restaurants, and you need the mom-and-pop businesses all along Broadway, down Missouri Street. I grew up in this town, and I was even asked, "Why do you care?" I care because I grew up here. I visit here. I come eat here. I work here. And there's, there's more contractors out there with the same issues that are, that are afraid of retaliation. Maybe I'm bullheaded enough where I don't care. You know, I stand up for my rights. Thank you. Thank you.
I think I know you. You may know someone that works here as well. Mr. Tommy Martin, will you come on? Is Mr. Logan with you or here? Welcome.
He's not here.
Okay. Hold on, before these five minutes start, do you know this guy right here?
No, I'll claim him in, uh, in private, but not in public. Uh, my name's Tommy Martin. I actually reside in Marion, but I'm here to, uh, to, just to tell y'all also, an event that we have this weekend and invite y'all out at the complex. Um, first of all, I'm a, I'm a tournament director for the United States Specialty Sports Association, which is, we call it UTRIP. It's the, uh, largest, uh, sanctioning body for travel baseball, softball, football, basketball. It's real similar to AAU, but it encompasses every sport. We are having a tournament at Tilden Rogers, and we have sixty-nine teams coming from six different states. Um, I got with, uh, Director Parker, and he looked back on his log, and he, he says it's the largest single event at Tilden Rogers in more than twenty years. So, um, we're pretty excited about it. It's about seven hundred and eighty-five baseball players. Um, we're expecting around three thousand people out at the park that day. It's a hundred and, about a hundred and forty baseball games in one day. It's a one-day event. We're gonna be on every field out there. But, uh, the way that this thing really grew legs, we, we actually planned three events out there this year, and our first one was in March, and we had about thirty teams, and then this one, we were hoping for around thirty or forty, but I got a, a coach that, that signed up and registered for the event from McCook, Nebraska. It's a twelve-hour drive. He registered an eleven-year-old baseball team. So I called him, and I said, "Coach, do you realize you registered for an event in Arkansas?" And he said, "Yes, they actually have a kid on their team that's got stage four cancer at Lebon, at St. Jude. He's been here since July." So, his, uh, his ten and eleven-year-olds are taking a couple of days extra off of school, and they're driving down on Friday. Um, they've actually got eighteen rooms booked at the, the new La Quinta Friday, Saturday, and Sunday night. Um, gonna plan our one-day event. Their teammate, Calvin, is gonna come over. Um, he's actually got cleared by his doctors to get to dress out. He's gonna throw out the first pitch. So we ended up making this all about play for Calvin. Um, we're gonna donate the proceeds of the event to, equally between St. Jude and to Calvin's family. His dad is a, uh, they actually have four kids. Um, they've had to rent an apartment in Memphis, because mom and Calvin have been here since July. Dad's back home in Nebraska, um, with his, with his three other children. Um, so I, as you can imagine, one income, you know, in two households is pretty substantial, um, twelve hours apart at that. So, you know, we're hoping that this, you know, that, that we can start attracting these teams to come to West Memphis and to Tilden Rogers, and, and we can go back to, to the days that, that we all remember in the late nineties and early two thousands, when you'd drive through there on Saturday, and you'd see the, the ballpark's absolutely full, and, uh, UTRIP has a, has a formula, that it's about a hundred and thirty-five dollars a day per player spent in the local economy. So, you know, we're gonna have just, just shy of eight hundred players this, this weekend. So, you know, an extra a hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand dollars worth of, worth of retail sales just from, from this one-day event. Um, and, you know, I don't know about you, but being a small business owner, I read something one time that says that the, uh, the average dollar spent in a small business is spent three to seven times in that economy before it ever leaves. So, you know, it, it's really hard to tell how, how big of an effect it'll have. It'll, you know, it, it's, it's a snowball effect for sure, but, you know, we appreciate the Parks Department. I drove by there yesterday. It was, it, all hands were on deck. Um, there were actually five utility trucks out there ti, checking to make sure every light was working. Um, they already had temporary fences put up. They had the pitching mound set. They actually cut trenches into the, into the grass, preparing for the rain, in case it, you know, they're, they're doing everything they can to make sure this event, you know, goes on, and I applaud their efforts, and, oh, we just need a mother nature to, to, to take it easy on us the next forty-eight hours, if we could. Thank y'all. I'm sorry? I didn't know they did, I guess with, uh, with, with Tracy out of town, somebody dropped the ball. I'll make it up to you in two weeks. How's that?
Don't worry. Don't worry. Um, that's all we have. Anything else, or?
Mayor, I'd like to just reiterate something real quick. Mr. Brewer left before I could even say a thing, but I did go out and intervene between him and Johnny. Johnny told him two little simple things to do. There was no problem. He understood. Johnny understood. I understood, and then it still comes to this. But the guy, from what I can gather, from what Johnny showed me, he never showed, he never came back to finish the two items that were supposed to be done. He did want for me to put on with everything hot in that whole box, no wires on, and I think I'd have done the same thing. I'd have refused that myself.